Call the special call meeting of June 30th, 2021 to the Stanley County Board of Education to order. I ask Mr. Sorensen if he would to have our invocation and pledge.
Bow our heads, please. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the count's blessings that you lay upon us, and we pray for forgiveness of our sins in thought, deed, action, and inaction. We ask that you guide our hearts and our minds tonight to make decisions and choices that go to your glory and do the best possible things as we can for Stanley County schools. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
We have one board member who is going to be calling in this evening. Mr. Graves was unable to attend in person this evening, so he will be here by phone. This time, going to entertain a motion from the board to go into closed session for Personnel Matters under North Carolina General Statute 14331811A6, Student Matters, General Statute 14331811A1, and Attorney Client Matters, North Carolina General Statute 14331811A3.
May we go in closed session?
Motion by Ms. Gibson, second by Ms. Watson. Any discussion? Any of you in all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, no. And the motion carries.
Thank you, Chairman Chance, members of the board. Ms. Pennington and here today, we got some recognitions that we would like to give to some of our student athletes who not only excel in the classroom but have excelled on the field of play, and I'll let Ms. Pennington introduce these athletes to you.
Thank you, Dr. Dennis. We have some champions to recognize tonight, and I could not be more excited. We're going to start with South Stanley High School. So while I go ahead and say a few things, I'd like for our players, our coaches, and any administrator who's here with South Stanley tonight to just come on up and start getting here in the front. We're going to put you front and center. I think they're used to being front and center. Board, this very talented group of ladies were undefeated in the Yadkin Valley 1A Conference. They captured first place in the Western Region with a shutout, I think it was 16-0, correct me if I'm wrong, does that sound right, against Mountain Island Charter. This win put them in the state tournament where they faced Camden County. And just so you'll know, when they get to the state playoffs, it's a series, and they have to win two out of three games. The first game, they kept on that winning streak. The next day, they had a game to play, and it didn't go so well. And then that third game, they came up a little short then, but it does not diminish the achievements that they had all season. That's why we felt like it was important to bring them in and let you see them and congratulate them. I'd like to let their head coach, Coach David Poplin, come on up to the podium and say a few words about his wonderful team. Are you a talker?
Not prepared. First of all, I'd like to thank you guys for having us to recognize this team. This was a great bunch. No kidding, with the COVID hit and got shut down the year before, had a lot of players unproven, untested, didn't know where we were headed, how we were going to get there, but we had a plan. And Coach Little, Matt Little, my assistant, we challenged them. We had 13 players total, no JV team, 13 players. We challenged them to the utmost daily, and they responded. And I can't help but to get emotional thinking about it. We're losing four, we graduated four, so the core's coming back, but it's been a privilege, and it was a great ride. And I told them, I told them way back, I can't remember what game it was after, I think it was a Chatham Central game, I told them, I said, "You're good enough to play for a state championship, and I believe we can win it." And we got there, so that was part of our goal, was to get there. And now the new goal is to repeat. Thank you all again.
Well said. Thank you and congratulations.
Congratulations.
Want to get some pictures? Stay right there. And at this time, I'd like to ask Coach Carter and the players, coaches, administrators, athletic director, I think is here as well, from West Stanley High School Women's Softball Program to please come forward. And there were a lot of conflicts. We've got girls who are playing travel ball, there were vacations, but they're here to be recognized on behalf of the whole team, so. Guys, get closer to the board. Come on. Oh, wow. What a season. These ladies have accomplished so much over the past few years under the leadership of Coach Craig Carter. These ladies can honestly say that they have achieved back-to-back state championships, even though they weren't in back-to-back years, but there was no season in the 2020 year, but they were state champs in '19 and again in '21. That gave West Stanley High four state titles in their fast-pitch program history. Four. And that ties them for third in the state. They're only behind East Surrey and Alexander Central. That is quite the accomplishment. I want to take a few minutes to say some words about Coach Carter, because you may know he has announced his retirement, and we are sad to see him leave. So he has served as the West Stanley head coach for the past four seasons, and during that time posted an amazing 76-4 overall record and a perfect, perfect 36-0 against all the Rocky River competitors. He has recently retired from the North Carolina Highway Patrol and just completed his first year as a school resource officer. We need to get him to Stanley County, don't we? He is retiring from coaching after spending 18 years as part of a high school coaching staff. He has served at JM Robinson and Mount Pleasant before coming to West Stanley. So we'd like to thank him, his wife Shannon, his two daughters for allowing us to have time with him over the past four years to accomplish what he's done at West Stanley. So congratulations, and I invite you to come to the podium.
I'd like to thank you guys for having us today. Obviously, our girls are scattered all over the country, playing travel ball, vacation, and so it was hard to get them all here, so I apologize for that. I know they would love to have been here, but obviously they are busy doing other things. Our six seniors probably are getting ready to graduate, or graduated, but getting ready to go to college as well. So it's, quite honestly, it was an honor to be here. You know, I'm thankful to have been a part of this program over the years, you know, playing against them, coaching against them, coming through, you know, the ranks. You know, they were always a tough program and had a lot of phenomenal athletes, and that was no different the last four years. You know, we were blessed as a coaching staff to have those girls. The girls deserve all the credit. They played the games, they won the games, and they worked hard on the field, but more importantly, they worked hard in the classroom. And, you know, a lot of those girls are honor students, so that speaks highly of them. I want to say thank you to Daniel Smith, our athletic director, for having a faith in me to put me in charge of the program and keep it going the last four years. Our administrators are here as well, they've been super supportive, and it's been great having them, you know, there. They've been great to me as well as the girls as well. My coaching staff, I mean, what do I say about them? They've been with me the whole time, other than Emily going to Catawba for one year and then coming back, but it was a blessing to have them as a part of the program too. And I'm just honored, you know, we had 15 girls on the team this year, and all of them are phenomenal athletes, and it was, and the JV program was strong as well, they were undefeated. So there's a lot to look forward to in the future. So like I said, I'm excited, and I thank you for the opportunity. I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you and congratulations. Let's get a quick picture before y'all leave. Thank you.
In this board.
And the state champions just keep coming. I'd like to ask Ali Curry and his coach to come up to the podium and join me. We have Coach Bernard Henry, who is with him today. Ali is a member of the Albemarle High School Men's Track and Field Team. This past weekend, he competed in the 1A State Championships. He placed fifth in the long jump, he tied for third in the high jump, and it was that triple jump where he excelled, and I think you can hear the bling around his neck. He brought home the gold in the triple jump. We are so very proud of you, Ali. Coach Henry, would you like to say anything? Putting you on the spot. Come on.
First of all, appreciate y'all for having us. This young man has been a bright shining light for Albemarle High School. With everything shutting down with COVID, he really didn't have a full year. Came back this year with us, told me, "Coach, let's go get it." Had a great week heading in, regionals, conference, was a leader on our team unspoken, and that's a great admiration to have for a young man. His mom and his dad did a great job. I really didn't do much but put him in the right opportunity and challenged him. He pushed my team, he was one of the biggest leaders in his actions going forward with our team. Right there before going to the States, unfortunately, I couldn't be with him, messed up trying to cut my yard for my son and got a concussion, but it was one of those things. But I didn't have to say much but to talk to him before they left. My son challenged him, went out there, and they were long jumping. My little man said, "You ain't going to outjump me, I'm number one." And I had to give him a call and say, "Listen, you ain't number one no more. We got a champ right here." And I'm very proud of him representing our county as well as Albemarle High School.
Thank you, Coach. We'll get a picture real quick. And we have one final state champion to recognize. Unfortunately, she is at the beach, her family joined her today, or I would have had them here. I do have Coach Teresa Davis with us. She's going to come stand beside me. I told her I wouldn't put her on the spot too bad. But we have Tagan Louder, who is a student athlete at North Stanley High School, also competed in the 1A State Championships this past weekend, same place, same day as Ali. And oddly enough, they won the gold medal in the same event. So let me just tell you what she did. She placed fifth in long jump, second, she got a silver medal in high jump, and brought home the gold in the triple jump. So we are so proud of her, and I'd like to give Coach Davis a chance to say a few words.
Thank y'all for having us. We like to say, in 34 years I've been coaching, Tagan has been like a, she's shining, bright spot and a star. She's probably one of the hardest workers I've had at North Stanley High School of all these years I've coached. When we were going into the triple jump, after she had done the high jump was an unexpected one, that was a nice surprise when she got second, but she pulled her grow, and so we were nervous about how she was doing. She started getting tears in her eyes, and I said, "Come on, you can do it." She said, "I am." If you knew anything about Tagan, she only gives 100%. She's not going to do it if she doesn't give 100%. And on her second jump was the jump that she did to win the state with, and so she really, she upset some girls there, there were some tears, happiness from us, and not so happy from other girls and everything. But one of Tagan, not only is she just a good athlete, but one of her really good qualities, she is a good person, and she's going to be going to state next year, and state's going to be lucky to have her. She's not going to go run track or anything right now, we hope maybe club, but she is just a, she's a good person, a very good role model for these young ladies in this day, so thank you so much.
Thank you and congratulations.
Congratulations.
That's it.
Ms. Pennington, can you hear me in the back of the room?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we were told there was some audio difficulty a bit ago, so just making sure everybody can hear everything. Okay, thank you. This time, I'm going to ask for approval of the minutes of the May 31st Emergency Call Special Meeting and the June 1st, 2021 Regular Call Meeting. Are there any corrections to those minutes? If not, I'll entertain a motion for approval. Motion by Ms. Watson that the May 31st and June 1st meetings be approved, minutes be approved. Is there any discussion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sorensen, any discussion? Any of you in all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
And those opposed, no. Okay, very good. Next agenda item is committee reports, instructional program, Ms. Gibson?
No report.
Facilities, Mr. Graves, can you hear me?
Yes, sir. I'm actually, we don't, we just, we second, um, we did not have a, any, that, um, anyone else that's in the board here, um, tell me what they're, they're talking about. Um, I did want to let people know that, that we need to sort of move across, um, we need to hold up your transfer request. Um, but the board will describe our, we have some challenges with capacity for our school, so it's my attention sometimes greatly small towards the rest. We order the committee to get an update, uh, that we can, what does somebody saw, and how we might activate to adjust this for the following school year to a quality, uh, most of the regular becoming to challenge, but make decisions.
Thank you, Mr. Graves. Finance, Mr. Sorensen?
No report at this time.
Personnel, Ms. Watson?
No report.
Policy, Ms. Poplin?
And per my usual, I have a big, long list for you, sorry.
Go right ahead.
Um, policies for final approval tonight, our policy 1310, parental involvement, 1510, school safety, 1610 professional and staff development, 1710 discrimination and harassment prohibited by federal law, 2440 policy review and evaluation, 2610 board attorney, 3470 alternative learning program, 4040 staff-student relations, 4050 children and military families, 4125 homeless students, 4240 child abuse and related threats to child safety, 4270 concussion and head injury, 4335 criminal behavior, 5070 public records retention, release, and disposition, 7232 discrimination harassment in the workplace, new policy 4341 parental involvement and student behavior issues, 4342 student searches, 4345 student discipline records, 4351 short-term suspension, 4352 removal of student during the day, 4353 long-term suspension, new policy 4362 request for readmission of students suspended for 365, policy 4370 student discipline hearing procedures, 4400 attendance, 4600 student fees, 4700 student records, new policy 4705 confidentiality of personal identifying information, new policy 4705 dash R confidentiality of personal identifying information, 4720 survey of students, 7335 employee use of social media, policy 4316 student dress code, and 4325 drugs and alcohol. And those are for final approval right now.
For final approval. You've heard the policy numbers, had a chance to review those, I hope they've been on the table for the last 30 days. So this time, the board chair will entertain a motion that those policies be approved as presented.
I move we approve the policies as presented.
A motion by Ms. Gibson, do I have a second? Second by Ms. Watson, any discussion?
Aye.
Any of you in all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, no. And the motion carries.
I have, um...
You have others you're going to put on the table?
I have some to be rescinded and then one to be tabled.
Okay, go ahead.
The ones to be rescinded are policy 1060 board appeals panels, policy 2075 research, 4050 attendance, 4070 search and seizure, 4075 disposal of confiscated weapons, drugs, or alcohol, 4095 maintenance review and release of student records, 4100 student discipline records, and 4195 student fees, fines, and charges are to be rescinded.
Okay, there's no action to be taken by the board as those policies have been replaced by new ones.
And then the last thing is the policy 4150 that you have a copy of in your packet is to be tabled for 30 days.
Policy 4150 will be tabled for 30 days and voted on at the next board meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Poplin. Legislative Resource Network, Dr. Dennis or Ms. Gibson?
No calls to me.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the 2021 through 2026 Child Nutrition Supply Distributor
Good evening. I'm asking for approval for the Child Nutrition Department to enter into a five-year contract with Gordon Food Service. Using federal procurement and the North Carolina Procurement Alliance guidelines, Gordon's food service was the lowest bottom line bidder for groceries and supplies.
Board will entertain a motion on the recommendation of the Child Nutrition Services Director that we enter into this contract for five years. What is the cost?
It is an approximate cost. Every year, we estimate our usage, and the cost per year is estimated $1,371,421.01.
Okay. Entertain a motion.
I move we enter into the child nutrition contract that's presented by Ms. Melton.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Gibson, second by Ms. Poplin, is there any discussion? Any of you in all those in favor say aye? Those opposed, no. And the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Melton. Curriculum and Instruction, Dr. Dennis, I believe you're covering this.
Yes, sir.
Like Lewis tonight?
Yes, sir. She wasn't able to make it today. She had prior engagement. So what we have is the calendar we're bringing back to you, hopefully for the last time. There was a recommendation brought forth from the Curriculum Committee, and that was to add quarterly planning days. So if you look at your calendar, there are three quarterly planning days, October the 8th, December 17th, and March 11th, and these will be sheltered remote days for district-wide planning across collaborative teams and between schools. So my motion is to approve as presented, unless there are any questions. Yes, ma'am. It's just those, it's just changing those yes, yes, ma'am.
Since this comes out of committee, it's being made as a motion from the Curriculum Committee, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion that the quarterly planning days be approved.
I move the quarterly planning days be approved in the calendar for next year.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Gibson, second by Ms. Poplin, any discussion? Any of you in all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, no. And the motion carries. Just an observation, as of right now, Dr. Dennis, we still are anticipating that the first day of school will be the 23rd of August, correct?
Yes, sir, and I do not see that changing.
You do not see anything coming out of the legislature that might alter that at this time?
That would not alter Stanley County, no, sir.
Very good. Thank you very much. Stanley Academy Learning Center Alternative Accountability Plan.
Yes, sir. So yearly, we have to present our plan for our alternative school when it's a modified accountability plan. And in years past, what we usually select is Option B, which is participation in the modified system, and elevated is defined by the following general statute, and the components of that are 20% of the student persistence is used to calculate the achievement, then you have just basic student achievement, 20%, which is whatever level you make on the below test, the end of grade, the end of course, ACT, you see the rest of them. And then we also use three years of data for calculating that particular portion, and then there's a 60% growth index calculated using EVA, and which is a little different than your other schools, which use an 80% school achievement, or excuse me, student achievement, and a 20% growth model. So we propose the keep using Option B for the 2021-2022 school year. Are there any questions? If not, I would like to recommend Option B as the method that Stanley County Schools will use to evaluate its learning academy.
Chair will entertain a motion that Option B, the Alternative Schools' Modified Accountability Plan, be approved. I move that we adopt Option B. Dr. Dennis? Motion by Mr. Sorensen, do I have a second? Second by Ms. Watson, any discussion? Excuse me. Any of you in all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
Aye.
And the motion carries. And I believe you also are covering Personnel Administration, Student Services tonight, Dr. Dennis.
Yes, sir. We covered Section 1, which was information only, but you'll see Section 2, which are recommendations for summer contracts, teacher contracts, administrative personnel, certified and classified, and substitute bus drivers. If there are no questions, I recommend to approve Section 2 as presented.
Everyone had an opportunity to look over. Okay, no comments, I'll assume that you're ready to vote, so entertain a motion that Section 2 of the Personnel Agenda be approved as presented by Dr. Dennis.
I move we approve Section 2 of the Personnel Agenda.
Do I have a second? Second by Ms. Watson, any discussion? No discussion? Okay, any of you in all those in favor say aye? Those opposed, no. And Section 2 of the Personnel Agenda is approved as presented. Auxiliary Services, Mr. Dudley, I think this is your portion of tonight's agenda.
Good evening to all. First of all, I'd like to call Todd Bowers up to discuss the item about the South Stanley High School track budget increase.
Good evening. I just need to come before you this evening, South Stanley High School track, I had budgeted $45,000. The job actually come in at $54,400, so I need to increase that budget item to $55,000. What we're doing on the tracks tied to petroleum prices, and so that's the reason, some reason it's a little higher than I'd anticipated.
This budget's already been approved, but we're going to be approving the increase that's above 10%.
That's correct.
So this time, the chair will entertain a motion that the South Stanley High School track recoding bid be increased from $45,000 to $55,000. Have a motion?
I move we approve increasing that bid.
Motion by Ms. Gibson, do I have a second? Second by Mr. Sorensen, is there any discussion?
How long did the last track, it seemed like it's been here quite a while.
It has. It's just a recoding, a replacement of the rubber.
Right.
It's something you have to do about every 10 years, and this is 10-year cycle.
Any more discussion? Any of you in all those in favor of the increased bid of $55,000, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, no. And the motion carries.
On a point of information, I'd just like to let the... On a point of information, I'd just like to let the board know the last one I came back for on the Aquadale boiler and was requesting it go up to $130 on the engineer's recommendation, it actually came in closer to my estimate at $73,000. So it came in much lower than we had anticipated.
South Stanley. Very good. All right, Mr. Dudley.
Okay. First of all, on the agenda, we have our budget amendments. This is actually the year-end budget amendments that I've worked on for quite a while, seems like. In your packet, you'll see there's five pages, and it's got Budget Amendment Number 2 at the top. Your first of all is your Other Special Revenue. That's your Fund 8, Funds. Our current budget, prior to the budget amendments that was approved back in March, we were at $1,186,938. We have increased that budget to $781,661, with a remaining budget of $1,968,599. If you flip to Page 2, our State Funds, we ended up with $60 million, $60,509,649. The increase that I'm asking for approval tonight was for $566,474. Page 3, and anytime you have any questions, feel free to stop me. Page 3 is your Local Funds. That was be with funds from the County Commissioners, anything that we run in our local fund category. We've actually ended up with $12,936,702, asking for approval on $384,869.76. Page 4 is our Federal Funds. And you know, this is the one that's got the big pot of ESAR funds that was given to us, or allotted down to us a couple of months ago. We started out, or we were at $8,336,591.74. I'm asking for an increase of, approval of $23,395,428. And we're ending up with $31,732.19.79. Page, next page is, I'm sorry.
These are all ESAR funds?
No, this would, the majority of the increase is because of the ESAR funds. ESAR 2 and 3 was roughly about $23 million of that, okay?
Let's do it.
Next page is our Capital Outlay Funds. We were at $3,191. The increase I'm requesting approval on tonight is $41,518, leaving us at $3,232,604. And of course, the last page is Child Nutrition Funds. Presently, this is an estimation because we are still haven't closed our June for Child Nutrition. We will be closing that with our audit report that will be given to you in October or around that date. But roughly what we're looking at, right now, we're sitting around about $70,000 that we're going to receive in revenue for the month of June. I've done an estimate of roughly $63,000 on this pot of funds for the close for this evening. We're at $4,351,416. The increase approval is $116,646. And the amount final is $4,468,628.83. Our total end-up budget for this year is $114 million and some odd change. I'll tell you in just a minute. That is the funding that we've received at Stanley County Schools this year. Any questions concerning the budget amendments?
Any questions, Mr. Dudley?
Okay, okay. That was just for review. You don't have to have any action on that until the audit report is done and final. I'm sorry, yes, you do have, you had to do a motion on the board's amendments.
Correct, we did.
I'm sorry. I'm already skipped to the next step.
Those are amendments, so we do have to vote on them. Chair will entertain a motion that we approve Budget Amendment 2 in each of the areas described by Mr. Dudley and as presented on your document this evening. That we approve Budget Amendment 2. Do I have a second? Second from both Ms. Gibson and Ms. Sorensen. Any further discussion?
I just want to tell you, I appreciate you doing all the work. I know, we talked about COVID's impact, this money mess. I really appreciate what you do.
Thank you, sir. It's been, as of 5 o'clock today, I was finally finishing up. It's been a busy week.
Well, just to make a statement here, too. It sounds like a huge figure. But all of those dollars are accounted for and used, without doubt, in the proper location, proper place, and proper funding. And so you realize that, you know, a great deal of that was federal government funding that was an unexpected increase to our budget that on normal years, we would not have had.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. We roughly, just to give you a heads up for Stanley County Schools, with the COVID-related funds, we received roughly about $27,45,091 in COVID-related funds at Stanley County Schools. So you can see that that has made a big impact on our revenues for this year. Last year, we were sitting at a little less than $90 million total at the same time. So you can see that that has made a big difference.
Absolutely. Right, any discussion, questions concerning Budget Amendment 2? If not, I will call the vote. All those in favor of approving Budget Amendment 2 as presented, say aye. Those opposed, no.
Okay. Now, the financial statement. You know, this is preliminary. It's not final till the actual audit is completed. But I sort of wanted to give you a heads up of where we stand so far as of June 30th. In this packet, you'll see that there's about seven pages of a bunch of numbers. Our first page, and our first two pages is our State Funds. Of that State Funds, you'll see there's roughly about $1,680,000 left on the table. On that, I just want to let you know that roughly about $996,000 of that will be carryover funds into next school year. We've got roughly the summer school funding that will actually be carried over, as well as at-risk funds. We're sitting at roughly about $295,000 of that that's going into next school year. And then also, we've got our State Textbook Allotment. That's roughly a little over $478,000 that's going into that carryover. So that is, that's pretty much all the funds that we will actually see next year in carry, from the carryover of the State Funds Allotment. The other line items, like for teacher allotment and all that, that's based on estimated average salaries. But we are sitting at roughly, we've used all of our allotment for teachers, instructional support, principals, assistant principals, and as well as our CTE. So we shouldn't have just a minimal of those areas left on the table as with the state pulling tonight. So that's where that, those amounts are coming from. We can't exceed those allotted teacher numbers and principal and assistant principal numbers. We have to base it on the number of months or actual number of positions that we've received. Page 3, you'll see Local Funds. That's our Local Funds there. Of the $12 million that we have got as current budget, we've spent a little over about $11,800,000 of that. There'll actually be roughly about a million, a little over a million, one that will actually be rolling into next school year out of Local Funds. The next page is our Federal. And you'll see where those amounts, I said that we were going to have a carryover in Federal of roughly about $23 million that will be going into next school year from Federal Funds. And that's, like I said, pretty much the ESAR amount, ESAR funds. The next page is Capital Outlay. We received roughly, and our budget was a little over $3.2 million. When you see current budget, we've actually spent roughly $2,329,000 of that. So we're looking at a little over $900,000 going into next year for Capital Outlay Fund ballots. Do want to make note that on the Quarter Cent Sales Tax Line item, you'll see that we were allotted $125,000 from the County Commissioners. I had to put $135,000 from Fund Ballots into that category to make sure that we balance for the expenses that we had done for our Quarter Cent Sales Tax Capital Outlay items. Okay? Next page is Fund 5, which is our Child Nutrition Account. You'll see that of the budget of $4,468,000, we've spent roughly about $3,500,000. I'm sure there's going to be a figure to add to that once we close Child Nutrition. So that will, I'll give you more of an in-depth total on that in the future or either at the audit presentation of what we ended up with Child Nutrition. And the last page is our Fund 8, or Special Revenue. You'll see that we ended up with about $1,900,000 in that budget. We've spent a little over $863,000 of that, and leaves right smart a little over a million in that category. And what that pretty much is, is a lot of your TQP grant and your, I've lost blank. Restore Grant, thank you. So, but that's where we stand with Fund 8. I do want to let you know that our total for State Carryover again would be roughly about $995,000, and Federal Carryover, a little over $23,137,000. I've sort of estimated what the Fund Ballots could be for Local and Capital Outlay at the end of this year. We're starting now, our Fund Ballots last year for Local was $685,000. I'm hoping to add to that a little over $900,000 this year. And then Capital Outlay, we were at $1,539,000, and I hope to add a little over $740,000 to that once the audit is complete. So our Fund Ballots should be pretty good in Local and Capital Outlay of a little over $3.8, $3.9 million in both categories at the end of the audit. That's my estimate at this time. Any questions?
Mr. Dudley, I've got a question. It's probably on the other section. But what did the COVID money, you said there was $27 million? What did that go for?
There was different categories for that, Dr. Leah Flur. We had anything from actual employee, I mean, personnel, computer devices, technology devices. We had student technology devices. We had some tutoring services in that category. We had, there was a big gamut of different things that we had to spend that money on. But it was categorized in about 15 different PRCs, or 15 different program areas that the state and federal government sent down to us and say, this is how you got to spend it. And so a lot of it overlapped one another. We had several million dollars that was for EC-related staff for EC-related issues and funding for that. And so it's just, it was just all set down in different categories.
I know, excuse me, upgrading air systems was a very large one. And there's some that were equipment. But in the end, it all has to tie back somehow to COVID. We can't use them arbitrarily if we decide we want to hire another teacher or something. It has to be either to learning loss because of COVID or improvement in infrastructure due to COVID.
Yeah. And that's pretty much the answer to an ESAR 3 funding that we got is how, is when it comes to the air quality and stuff of that sort, and learning loss.
Mr. Dudley, can you give me that textbook allotment number one more time, please?
Textbook is $478,427. And we have got a, we actually, myself and Lynn Plummer spoke about that a little bit today. There is the adoption that Dr. Blake Lewis had mentioned at last board meeting concerning some curriculum, new curriculum adoptions that actually has some textbooks that will actually come from the State Textbook Warehouse that this funding could be absorbed for.
Real quick question on the Quarter Cent Sales Tax.
I do not, at this point, I could find that out before I get back to you. Okay?
Well, Mr. Dudley has the floor.
Could I ask Ms. Mandy Melton a question? I think everything kind of goes along with this with funding. I know we approved your vendor, and I'll, so can you kind of give an update with how the summer meals? How is that going?
We're actually doing really well. Summer school, of course, we're feeding a lot of children through summer school. And we're averaging about 150 people in our drive-through every day at Central.
That's great.
Our revenues this month, we filed our claim today, was about $70,000 in federal reimbursement just for the month of June.
Awesome. So next year, for our meals, is everyone in the county receiving the breakfast and the lunch?
We just, well, we received word that it will be free for all students again next school year through June of 2022. But we did receive word Monday that we are not allowed to serve holiday or weekend meals any longer. And the meals can only be served to the students within the schools. You know, this summer and last school year, we were serving to anyone in the community, zero through 18. But next school year, they will have to be enrolled in the school.
In our schools?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay. Well, thank you. I just appreciate everything there, and yes, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Dudley?
Okay, no other questions. And then the last thing on my part will actually be the continuing budget resolution. We, I did get an email from the County Commissioners or from the Finance Department on what our allotment would be for Local and Capital Outlay for next year. At this time, I have not created a budget for that because they just acted on the 22nd, I think it was, at their County Commissioner meeting. But I'm asking tonight that we actually do a continuing budget resolution based on our needed expenses until a further budget is adopted. And you'll see the actual statement in the packet that the Stanley County Board of Education 2021-2022 Budget in compliance with North Carolina General Statute, interim budget that the Stanley County Board of Education approves a continuing budget resolution for the purposes of paying salaries and usual ordinary expenses until a new budget has been adopted. And that would have to be approved.
And to finish that statement, this action is required due to the state of North Carolina not having an approved budget in place at the present time.
Yes, sir.
Board will entertain a motion that we approve the continuing budget resolution as presented by Mr. Dudley.
I move we approve the continuing budget resolution.
Motion by Ms. Gibson, do I have a second? Second by Ms. Watson, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed, no. And the resolution is passed.
Chairman, Chance, I'd like to say one thing. I want to thank Mr. Dudley and his team for all the hard work they've done. They've really streamlined our budget. They've been very fiscally responsible to show that we're good stewards of the taxpayers' money. And this, with being able to carry these monies over and just to make it so that we're more flex, we can be more flexible in our budget, says a lot to how his team has managed it.
Board will take a five-minute recess for the purpose of the chair needs to go to the restroom. Call the board back to order. Our next agenda item is public comments. Before we open the floor for comments, I have a statement by the board that I'd like to read on behalf of the board. Can everybody hear me? Got it, okay, there we go. "The North Carolina Schools Toolkit covered the 2020-2021 school year and is set to expire along with the governor's mask mandate on July 31st. Therefore, we as a district do not anticipate, nor are we planning at this time for our students to return to school in the..." for our students to return to school in, in August under any kind of a mask mandate. North Carolina Public, North Carolina Public School Superintendent Catherine Truitt put out a similar statement today. And in it, she also supports that each LEA or local district having the choice to decide for themselves whether students should or should not wear masks in the classroom. Going to read the board policy on public comments. And since we have seven people signed up, the board will take a motion shortly after I complete reading the policy. Each month, the regularly scheduled board meeting, there will be a time set aside for citizens to address the board through public comments. Each speaker will receive three minutes to present comments. However, the public comment session will not exceed 15 minutes total, except by a majority vote of the board. The sign-up sheet was available for you 30 minutes prior to the meeting's, meeting's beginning. During the public comment period, the board chair will recognize speakers in the order in which they signed up. Substitute speakers will not be permitted, and speakers may not donate any portion of their unused time to another speaker. If a speaker is unable to present all of his or her information within the specified time limit, the speaker may provide the board with the additional information in written form. Board members will not respond to individuals who address the board, except to request clarification of any point made by the presenter. So at this time, I'm going to entertain a motion that the board allow 21 minutes for public comments as we have seven speakers this evening.
I move that our board allow 21 minutes so that we can hear all of the comments tonight.
A second, a motion.
I have a motion by Ms. Gibson, second by Ms. Poplin and Ms. Watson. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. And those opposed, no. Okay. First to speak tonight is Mr. Jason Fibbs.
Good evening. My name is Jason Fibbs. I'm a concerned taxpayer, uncle to two SCS students, and speaking tonight on behalf of over 1,000 petition signers who want you to unmask Stanley County schools for the remainder of the summer and the 21-22 school year. Governor Cooper and Health Secretary Cohen have made it clear they are going to follow the politically motivated guidance of the CDC, no matter what, and continue to hold our children hostage until they get an experimental and potentially dangerous vaccine they do not need. At a joint pest breast conference on June 2nd with Governor Cooper and Secretary Cohen, Cohen said, quote, "As of right now, we want to be sure that we are protecting our students and making sure that those who are unvaccinated are wearing masks, so that is what we will continue to do," end quote. Knowing September is the earliest the vaccine will be available for those under 12, that all but guarantees Governor Cooper will extend the mask mandate for schools into next year. Yet this position is clearly misguided and not backed by law or science. Masks are still under emergency use authorization by the FDA, and therefore it is a violation of federal law and the 14th Amendment to require their use. According to OSHA's historical position and any broad meta-analysis of actual mask use since the pandemic began, masks do not prevent the spread of COVID-19. In addition, children in North Carolina under 18 have a COVID survival rate of 99.998%, which is better than the flu. And there is universal agreement among health professionals that schools are not major vectors of transmission. To the contrary, a recent lab report paid for by Florida school parents showed their children's masks were, quote, "contaminated with bacteria, parasites, and fungi," end quote, in just five hours of wear. This is to say nothing of their psychological effects on developing children. The fact is masks are unhealthy, ineffective, unnecessary, a barrier to learning, and foster a dehumanizing environment for teachers and students that negatively impacts mental health. But the good news is you are duly elected. Stanley County Board of Education can put an end to this tonight. The motion we call on you to make is not unprecedented or impossible. The Harnett County School Board has already done it. And if you're worried about a lawsuit, I have two things to say to that. First, freedom is not free. It costs us to get it, and it will cost us to keep it. And second, this is the job you signed up for. You wanted to lead, and now is the time to do so. You see, it's only in moments like this when our core principles are tested that we find out what we really believe. Governor Cooper has declared an illegal mandate without any defensible state of emergency, and he will continue to get away with it until the people have had enough. Well, I've had enough, and the people gathered here tonight have too. Yes, I'm aware the state legislature is pushing a bill to give authority over mask policy to schools, and I appreciate their efforts. I'm also aware of your comments earlier about the planned end of the mandate at the end of July. However, our own state reps will tell you that Cooper will just veto the bill, effectively killing it. Now is the time for you, our local school board, our last line of defense against a tyrannical governor, to take a stand on our children's behalf. And based on the comments you've already made, this ought to be a layup. The science is behind you, the federal law is behind you, the Constitution is behind you, and we, the people of Stanley County, are behind you. So let's make the motion tonight, vote for liberty, and let freedom ring for the children of Stanley County. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fibbs. Next speaker is Renee Dennis.
Chairman of the board, thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. I'd like for you to look back here at all these children who have came. I want to give a teacher-student perspective on masks. One teacher commented, "I had trouble hearing my students, and my students had trouble hearing me. Therefore, it put a restraint on teaching and learning. I felt like I was having trouble getting enough fresh air and felt worn out all the time. Wearing a microphone headset was not feasible, along with the mask, due to having to pull each one down to get fresh air. The masks just seemed difficult and make everything more difficult. They were awful. You also can't hear the kids. They chewed on them, and they can't see our mouths as we try to introduce new sounds." Another teacher said, "In the classroom, masks have hindered the ability for students to form relationships with both their teachers and their peers. Most students seem stifled, and participation in class during discussions and group assignments was much lower, to the point of almost nonexistent. When students were not wearing masks in class, I believe the masks prevented most of the students from being able to see the teachers and classmates' smiles, and this made it very difficult to build rapport and foster the critical classroom relationships necessary for learning. It was sad for me to say hi. I'm your teacher. Let me stand back, show you my face, and then slip it down from six feet away so they can feel like they know me. Teaching phonics is a nightmare. They can't hear sounds. For those who choose not to be vaccinated, they are pitting people against each other by making somewhere masks and letting the vaccinated ones take it off. It's giving people preference over others because they have different beliefs." A student from South Stanley Middle School said, "I hate the masks, and it doesn't make sense that we still have to wear them because nobody is shopping in stores with masks on anymore. So why do we need them at school, but not at other places? They're hot and annoying, and I can't breathe in them. People get the flu, but no one wears masks because of that. None of that makes sense." That was a 14-year-old child. An 11th grader gave me a quote, "It was hard enough wearing masks from 7:55 to 1:30. I can't imagine wearing it two more hours." A 10th grader quoted, "COVID is real, but let us decide how we want to protect ourselves." A student here tonight gave me a quote, "The masks get wet and are very uncomfortable." And that little gentleman is here tonight. Another student quote, "It is hard to understand the teachers and hard for the teachers to understand me." Another student tonight, she wears glasses. She said, "It's hard for me to see because it fogs up my glasses, and that's a hindrance to my learning." An anonymous teacher gave me the quote, "I feel that the masks should be optional, and the decision left to the parents." A final teacher quote, "My biggest concern about the masks is that so many kids came in day after day wearing the same cotton mask, and it wouldn't be washed day after day. They were filthy, and it totally defeated the purpose and probably made them more sick in the long run by keeping those germs on their faces." So I asked tonight that if you can't do anything tonight, that we have a public forum and let these children speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Andrea Culp.
Good evening. My name is Andrea Culp, and I am a parent of a child in Stanley County schools. And I want to tell you a story. There was once a wolf who got very little to eat because the dogs of the village were so wide awake and watchful. He was really nothing but skin and bones, and it made him very downhearted to think of it. One night, this wolf happened to fall in with a fine, fat house dog who had wandered a little too far from home. The wolf would gladly have eaten him then and there, but the house dog looked strong enough to leave his marks should he try it. So the wolf spoke very humbly to the dog, complimenting him on his fine appearance. "You can be as well-fed as I am if you want to," replied the dog. "Leave the woods. There you live miserably. Why, you have to fight hard for every bite you get. Follow my example, and you will get along beautifully." "What must I do?" asked the wolf. "Hardly anything," answered the dog. "Chase people who carry canes, bark at beggars, and fawn on the people of the house. In return, you will get tidbits of every kind: chicken bones, choice meat, bits of meat, sugar, cake, and much more besides, not to speak of kind words and caresses." The wolf had such a beautiful vision of his coming happiness that he almost wept. But just then, he noticed that the hair on the dog's neck was worn and the skin was chafed. "What's that on your neck?" "Oh, nothing at all, nothing at all," replied the dog. "What? Nothing?" "Oh, it's just a trifle. But please, tell me, what's on your neck? Perhaps you see the mark of the collar to which my chain is fastened." "What? A chain?" cried the wolf. "Don't you go anywhere you please?" "Well, not always, but what's, what's the difference?" replied the dog. "All the difference in the world. I don't care a rap for your feast, and I wouldn't take all the tender young lambs in the world at that price." And away ran the wolf to the woods. "There is nothing worth so much as liberty. All the titles, recognition, kind words, and caresses will not loosen the grip of tyranny. Choose boldness tonight, school board, and freedom, even if it costs you a few pieces of choice meat or cake."
Thank you. Next speaker is Patty Crump.
Chairman Chance and members of the board, have you ever heard the term "pipe hitter"? I guess it could have a number of meanings, but until I heard from former Secretary of State Mike Pompeo talk about pipe hitters in great detail several times over the last few months, I didn't know just how crucial it is that we all know and understand the value of a pipe hitter. If you look online for definitions involving the military community, pipe hitters describe special operations personnel who share a common belief in the unity of cause, the willingness to face extreme obstacles head-on, and the absolute refusal to back down in the face of adversity. According to Mike Pompeo, and I quote, "These are just people who work hard, who tell the truth, who keep their faith, who are fearless, who aren't going to be canceled, who are going to take a little bit of time on a Tuesday night to go to a city council meeting or on a Wednesday night to go to their church's chili cook-off. These are people who care about America deeply. They're willing to suffer some costs to defend the things we all care about. Frankly, pipe hitters get stuff done." I would venture to say that all 1,000-plus of those signatures Mr. Fibbs just shared with you represent 1,000 pipe hitters in and around Stanley County. And let's be honest, 1,000 is just skimming the surface. People are sick and tired. We are done with big government telling us when we can breathe fresh air. We are done with a governor handing down harmful mandates for our children that are in fact not backed by science. We are tired of hearing these masks may only be assigned to those who haven't received an experimental and often harmful vaccine. If that doesn't violate a person's HIPAA rights and their rights to medical privacy, then I don't know what does. Pompeo goes on to say, "We need people who are willing to break glass and work their tails off and be fearless and suffer the slings and the arrows that will come from the left-wing media, but to work tirelessly until they achieve it. Those are the criteria." Just one year ago, I sat in that seat with the majority of you, and we chose to break glass. Every news story we heard applied pressure to close schools and to send all our kids home for remote learning. But we broke glass, and we banged a few pipes and chose not only what was hardest, but what was right. From day one, our K through 5th graders experienced daily face-to-face learning, and we adopted a hybrid plan when many school systems were afraid of the repercussions. And today, I challenge you to do that again. Do what you know is right. Protect your constituents' unalienable rights and vote to make masks optional for staff and students effective immediately. I know some of you on this board will lead the charge, and I thank you for that. If I could trade places with the ones of you that are on the fence, I promise you I would. Be a pipe hitter.
Next speaker is Amy Fibbs.
I'm Amy Fibbs, a concerned citizen, taxpayer, educator, and aunt of nephews in SCS. Since I've detailed to each of you the superintendent, school nurses, and health department director via emails last week the safety concerns of the experimental vaccine, I'm going to focus on the Delta variant and early treatment options in an effort to reduce one of the motivations of the mask mandates and experimental vaccine promotion and pressure, and that is fear. The media and health officials are all abuzz warning about the Delta variant, and I venture it'll be Cooper's excuse at the end of July to, to reinstate his mask mandate or continue it. Yet data shows there's nothing to fear. There have been numerous warnings over previous variants that have proven unwarranted. As reported by Daniel Horowitz, the Daniel, Delta variant is actually less deadly. Data shows a Delta variant has a 0.1% case fatality rate that is the same rate as the flu and is much lower than the CFR for the ancestral strain or any of the other variants. To the extent this really is more transmissible, it's going to be less deadly. Dr. Ryan Cole, an independent pathologist who has performed over 100,000 COVID tests, characterizes variants as semience and explains viruses obtain benevolent mutations over time and become less virulent in part of the common cold season. Any strain could be less deadly if the media and health officials would promote the proven and effective early treatment protocols developed by providers such as Dr. Peter McCullough and Dr. Pierre Corey. As I shared in my emails last week, the data is clear. Prevention, including vitamin D and early treatment options, are available. Once diagnosed with COVID, many patients are told to go home with no treatment and come to the hospital only if symptoms get worse, which by then may be too late. But there are early treatment options that provide a high recovery rate, including hydroxychloroquine and ivermectin. Dr. McCullough testified before the Senate in November 2020 and stated he believes that as many as 85% of the COVID deaths could have been treated through early treat, prevented through early treatment. To close, I want to share an excerpt from Cory Tenboon's "The Hiding Place", which details the persecution and imprisonment of her Dutch Christian family for hiding Jews during the Holocaust. Tenboon recalls a conversation with her dad when, as a 10-year-old, she had asked him a difficult question. a difficult question. "He turned to look at me, as he always did when answering a question, but to my surprise, he said nothing. At last, he stood up, lifted his traveling case from the rack over our heads and set it on the floor. 'Will you carry it off the train, Cory?' he said. I stood up and tugged at it. It was crammed with the watches and spare parts he had purchased that morning. 'It's too heavy,' I said. 'Yes,' he said, 'and it would be a pretty poor father who would ask his little girl to carry such a load.'" Like a pretty poor father, throughout the pandemic, bureaucrats, administrators, society as a whole, have asked and have forced the children of our community to carry a load they neither can nor should carry. Take this burden off of our children. Vote tonight to unmask Stanley County schools.
Next speaker is Caitlin Burgess. Caitlin Burgess is our next speaker.
She had to leave early.
Okay. Then the next speaker will be Justin Helms. Justin Helms.
I think he left.
Next on our agenda is superintendent's comments. Dr. Dennis?
Thank you, Chairman Chance. So I just do want to give you an update on our summer learning program. We've had very good attendance at the program. It has went very well.
We'd like to use our seven minutes, please.
I'm sorry?
Seven minutes left. Two people left. Okay, you can wait. We all showed up tonight to speak.
But you didn't sign up.
Y'all wouldn't take open form, okay? Y'all are not gods that sit up there and dictate. We put y'all in this place. These kids have dealt with this for over a year. You can listen to what they have to say. For seven minutes, that is ours anyway.
Sir, all the speakers who signed up have had your three minutes and for bird protocol, I can't let you speak, I'm sorry.
Protocols are stupid. Do you see what protocols have got you?
Sir?
You just voted for extra time for us.
That's right.
Yes, and all the speakers who were on the list had their time to speak and over. I'm sorry.
Okay, just remember. Come vote season, just remember.
Hey, brother, it's not a problem remembering, I assure you.
Do what, sir?
I said it's not a problem remembering when it comes time to vote.
Okay.
Not at all.
Step down now.
Exactly. Step down now. We'll step up.
Dr. Dennis?
Yes, sir. So go to recess.
Board will stand in recess for 10 minutes to the anteroom, please. Call us back into open session. For the record this evening, this was a special called meeting of the Board of Education to deal with year-end items. Typically, a special called meeting's public comments are not heard. Therefore, the board and myself were gracious enough to allow folks to speak this evening when we didn't have to. So with that being said, we're going to continue with our agenda. Dr. Dennis, superintendent comments?
I yield my time.
Superintendent gives his time. Board member comments? We'll start with you, Ms. Poplin.
I yield my time.
Dr. Lefler?
I yield my time.
Ms. Gibson?
I yield my time.
Mr. Sorensen?
I yield my time.
Ms. Watson?
I also yield my time.
Mr. Graves? Right, as the board has yielded their time, the chair will entertain a motion to go into closed session for personnel items.
I move to go into closed session.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.[1772.74]